All right, everyone, good evening and fellow board members, good evening. Corey is the only one not with us today as he is traveling on business. So, welcome to everyone that is here and here so far. If you are here to speak during unscheduled audience participation, there are some white cards in the back that you would fill out. On the back are some instructions on how that unscheduled audience participation works. And then you would get that card over to Angela and Angela would get that to me at the appropriate time and then we would handle those comments. Other than that, I don't think I have any other announcements. So, Mary, could we do a...oh, let's do the pledge. Thank you. Where's the flag? Someone tell me what side it's on. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Mary, would you do attendance, please?
Certainly. President Donnelly.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present. Treasurer Bailey, he's excused. Trustee DeAlessandro.
Here.
Trustee Foster.
Here.
Trustee Schaper.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Throon, any changes to the board agenda?
None.
I don't have any either. That leaves us to the consent agenda where we have the minutes of the February 8th meeting, minutes of the closed session, minutes of the February 8th regular meeting, and then the minutes of February 16th special superintendent search meeting. Would someone like to make this motion? Dan?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second? Chad, a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Under Board of Education Matters, number 4A, is a request to reimburse Mary Hanser $290, $290 for expenses in a leadership conference that she went to in November. Would someone like to put that motion on? Eric?
Move to approve Mary Hanser's reimbursement request of $290 for expenses paid from the MASB Annual Leadership Conference, November 11th to 14th, 2021, as presented.
Thank you very much. Support? Chad, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
If someone was staying then?
Yeah.
Just wanted to record that.
You got it. You got it. All right, we're going to move on to B, the 2022 MASB Region 8 Board of Directors election. And I'm going to hand this over to Mary who has a suggested nominee. We can put that in the motion and then we can, under discussion, we can change it or amend it or whatever. So, Mary?
Move to nominate Melandie Hines to the 2022 MASB Region 8 Board of Directors as presented.
And that was Melody Hines?
Melandie. M-E-L-A-N-D-I-E.
Got it. Melandie. All right, very good. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion?
So, could you give us some feedback on why you think that she's the best candidate from your experience and meetings and stuff that you've gone to?
Certainly. And I was hoping folks would have a chance also to listen to Meet the Candidates that OCSBA put on, which was really helpful. We got an opportunity to have all the candidates answer some of the same questions. She's from a large district and she is very committed to her community and to the students throughout this area because we are in the Region 8. It's a larger area. And she just came across to me as the person with a wide variety of ideas and a wide variety of experience to bring forward for our area to the MASB.
And where's she from?
She's from Wayne Westland. Yep, from the Wayne Westland area.
Okay. Dan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess my question is, usually typically what we do when we have these type of nominations, and most of it's for Oakland County Board. We have a list of candidates and we discuss the individuals, if there's one person or another. And maybe perhaps I missed that step. Was that already, did that already happen?
Two meetings ago, I can't remember, we've done so many.
Okay.
But several meetings ago, we were given a list of, and biographies of four or five different individuals.
There were four.
To look at and an invitation to go watch them live in a Zoom conference, get in a feeling for them, and that's it. That's it. That's all that's been done prior to this was the biographies and an invitation to watch them in a live interview process.
Okay.
And then it was scheduled to come back to the board tonight for a vote.
Okay. All right.
Chad?
Mary, I didn't get a chance to watch the live interviews, but I do remember reading through those biographies. And I think, excuse me, if I'm recalling right, I mean, she stood out to me as a good choice. I mean, a lot of them are, a lot of them are pretty close in qualifications, but yeah, I'm in agreement with you.
I will add that each of the candidates who spoke supported the other candidates if they were the ones to go forward. That's, you know, they, they understand that we come to consensus, you know, and we move forward. So, that was great to hear from all the candidates. So, I just want to add that too.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just difficult when you have four and you read a biography and maybe you hear a little bit here and there, but you really don't know the depth. And then they have to make a decision for the whole region. It's probably the most time efficient, but probably not the most efficient to get to know who those people truly are, but it's almost nearly impossible to do so. I mean, if any of us ran, I don't think anybody would say, well, I know that person or that person or that person.
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you, Dan.
I said, if any of us ran, people would say, well, I don't know, you know, Heather from the next person or the next person. So, it's, I don't know if it's really the most efficient way to put somebody in this position, but I guess it's the system. So, it's kind of, it is what it is at this point.
You know, I know the MASB has sent out, you know, the materials that they could, which is what they do with all their candidates, is they send out those biographies. And it was really great of the OCSBA to schedule all the candidates for our region to do this Zoom call and do this Q and A with them. So, to give, you know, OCSBA gave us a little more help with that too because it is kind of hard when you don't know people, they aren't from your area, just to get to know them.
And I would agree because I think when we've done this several years ago, we didn't have an opportunity to listen to them. All we had was the biographies. You're right, we didn't. I don't recall that we had a video to watch or an interview to watch. So, but any other suggestions as to a different name?
No, no. I, you know, unfortunately, what ends up happening is usually, well, that's a good school district, they must know what they're doing. So, pick that one, so.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And the last, another thing we did, Mary, in the last meeting was have you look at some workshops. We talked about the fact that with a new superintendent, there is like that Board of Education 101 thing that we did alongside the interview, not the interview, but the review process, the training. We talked about that, is a must.
Right.
But then we talked about what are some other possible workshops that we could do as we bring a new superintendent in that would help us merge and become a team. So, I know that you did some work, so I'm going to let you take over here.
Well, thank you. I did. Thank you, President Donnelly. And yes, we did discuss the Superintendent Evaluation Tool Training that we would do with the superintendent, the board and the superintendent, along with the roles, responsibilities, and governance, that, the training that we received. I think we received it last year. Just to go through that again, with a new superintendent in place, it's important that we start off on the right foot, you know? I think our job is to, is to give every possibility that we have and every support to make our next superintendent successful and highly effective, you know, because that's what we're looking for, for our community. So, as I was looking through some of the materials MASB had and talking with some folks, what was coming up is a basic tool that they have free of charge to go through the tool, but they can also give us for a charge, they can give us a facilitator to help us go over the results, and that's the board self-assessment. So, if, many of you may have already heard about it, they do talk about this in, I think we talked about it in that governance class, but also in some of the 100 level MASB classes because it's a great way to get your, to get opinions from all of the board members and see where everybody is at. One of the, bless you. One of the things that we ask for from our administrators and from our teachers is that continuous improvement. And this is a tool that gives us an opportunity to see the areas where we can improve as a board and best support our superintendent in our district. This would give us an opportunity to work with a facilitator from MASB who could help us if he or she thought there were some other trainings that would be helpful to us, to make us more effective as a board. So, I invite you all to go to the MASB.org site and you can go right in and take a look at the board self-assessment tool. It is a survey tool that all of the board members would take online. Once all the board members have answered all the questions, as honestly as possible, that information is aggregated and then we can ask for MASB to come out with a facilitator to go over those results and just talk about, talk about where we are as a board, you know, and how we can continue to support our district in some ways where we have room for improvement.
So, question, the board assessment tool, what is the cost of the board assessment tool where we would go online, do the assessment, someone would grab those results and come back to us and take us through an interpretation, an explanation of those results and where we might go next?
So, that is a cost of $825 for the facilitation.
Okay.
And the data. If we wanted to just all go online and go through and answer all the questions, that's a free tool. We could do that. And when everybody's finished, we could get a report. Looks kind of like this. Not sure if we could make much out of it. I think that the investment in our board and professional development for our board members is definitely worth the $825 to have that trained facilitator.
Okay. All right. And the other two things that you looked at were like the Saturday thing that we've done in the past.
Absolutely. The roles, responsibilities, and governance.
Yep.
So, we can talk about what the board does, what the superintendent does, so we can all have that common ground to start with, with our new superintendent. I just think it's so powerful to have that as our starting point.
And as well, we would do the superintendent evaluation.
Absolutely. So, we can have, we can all be talking about the goals that we have for our superintendent, you know, and how we expect that information to come back to us, and that really sets the framework.
Dan?
I think that portion of it would be very helpful if we brought the superintendent in into that as well. That way, we go through that whole thing.
Oh, absolutely.
The evaluation process of the, you know, what we're looking for, the next superintendent will understand what we're using as our criteria. It might be a different scenario if our superintendent, our next superintendent had already been a superintendent and would know what to expect, but in our case, they're going to, they're going to be new. So, it would be helpful for them to see what we're looking for as guided by MASB and their guidelines.
No, great thought. Tim, you were always in those with us, weren't you, when we did those on a Saturday? Yeah, so, yeah, that would make a lot of sense. That would make a lot of sense. And I'm thinking that that's the obvious one. Those two are the obvious ones, the Board 101 and the Evaluation Tool that we did on a Saturday. And I would imagine we'd want to get on their docket to do that soon. I'm wondering if we could turn that into a motion so that we could have Angela charged to go start to look at dates and availability and start to work on something. Is anybody thinking that's a good idea? Turn that into a motion?
So, would we need to...
Sorry, so it would be to, the motion would be to schedule?
Charge Angela to schedule a Board, that Board 101, whatever that is called, and the evaluation thing on a Saturday as soon as, you know, in the very near future.
Maybe to chart available dates.
Yep, yep. Get some available dates and then the board can grab them.
I can make a motion. I will move to request Angela, the administrative assistant, I don't know if we should put her name, administrative assistant.
Yep.
To schedule the board for the MASB Roles, Responsibilities, and Governance course along with the Superintendent Evaluation Tool course as soon as practical, along with our new superintendent.
Very good. Angela, got it? Is there a second? Dan, second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The second one is the board assessment tool and the $825 fee for that if we want someone from the organization to do, help with that assessment. I don't know if you want to turn it into a motion today or if that's something you want to think about and look at in a, in a future meeting to turn into a motion?
I've already been looking at it, so I'm very familiar with it. I would be prepared to put a motion on now, but I don't want anybody to feel rushed that they have to make a decision on something that I've just brought forth. So, if, can we discuss it for a minute before I do that?
Or they may ask for it to just give, they may want to have some discussion, you know, study it for, until the next meeting.
I think maybe what we all do is look at the MASB.org self-assessment, take a look at that, see what's entailed. Maybe as you're looking at it, maybe take the self-assessment and then from there, we can go ahead and schedule something if we feel so it's, it's, yeah, I'm pretty sure we're going to want to do it, but as we get through it, we kind of know what we're getting ourselves into.
Okay. Chad?
Yeah, that's, that's where I was thinking as well, right? If we're out there, we do the assessment ourselves. I mean, we, you said we'd have access to that printed report once everybody's done theirs, right?
Everybody answers all of the questions. It's amazing.
Okay. So, what I'm thinking is we would at least have, we would at least have that. And then we can, I guess at that point, I mean, like you said, we could determine if we, if we want to have somebody, I mean, I think we probably might, but at least that way, we'd have, at least have that report in front of us and then schedule to have somebody come out and help us work through those, those results at that point.
Okay. Thank you. Dan?
Thanks. I think maybe what we should do instead of just saying, look, everybody go to the assessment, set a date.
Yeah.
Have it done by this time. And maybe that's something that you send out there.
Yep.
To us, Tom, in an email form and say, you know, have this self-assessment completed by, pick a date.
Yep. So, feeling that's kind of where we're moving then, why don't you send me the link?
Okay.
I'll then turn around and send that to everybody with some kind of instructions of a kind of a timeframe. And then after that, we can meet again to say whether we think it's going to be valuable to step further into this and bring someone in and pay the $825 and have them help us. Everybody good with that? All right, then we don't need a motion. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks for doing that work. Mr. Barnab, we have a motion to approve the first amended general budget. It's the presentation that you did last meeting. Is there some things you want to say before we put it on the floor?
Good evening. No, actually, for the amended, first amended budget of this year, I don't really have anything else to add unless there's any further questions for me in regards to the presentation from two weeks ago.
All right, so let us put the motion on the floor and if discussion warrants some questions to you, you just stay right there, all right?
Okay, you got it.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the 2021-2022 First Amended General Fund Budget as presented.
Very good. Is there support? Dan, support? Any new thoughts? Dan?
And I, I had reached out to Sam earlier today, but I thought it was very interesting to, maybe I just don't remember or I forgot or didn't know. I was curious as to why our local dollars dropped incrementally on each three line items. And I guess the part that I forgot was that there are, it's not just the 6% tax that we get locally, there's a lot of other things that go into that, rentals of facilities, rentals of, you know, the PAC, the fields, which we did not do for the past year and a half.
Hmm.
To the tune of about $100 and some thousand dollars. So, that gives you a real good indication of the revenue that those facilities generate for us year after year. We're talking about revenue that is significant. It's not just, you know, $400 or $500 here. You're talking about six figures. It's a lot of money that we can use to put into programs, into the classroom or other areas that need it. So, or use that money to maybe maintain the facilities that are being used, not just by us, but as they're rented out, and then use our general fund dollars to do all the other things that we need to do. So, it's, it was very interesting and I appreciate that detail and answering my question for me today, Sam.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great thought. Thank you. Any other comments or questions or for Sam? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Sam, the second thing you have is a request, approved network upgrade purchase. Why don't you talk about that for a second before we put it on?
Absolutely. So, this request is to update equipment, technology equipment throughout the district. The equipment that we're talking about here primarily is represented by switches throughout the district, network switches. Also, we have several racks that are going to be replaced that hold all of the networking gear in all of our tech closets throughout the district. We have our uninterrupted power sources or UPS, UPS devices throughout the district. And so, these are all up to date, obviously, new technology. It's replacing technology that we currently have that's approximately 10 to 12 years old. And so, what this number represents in terms of a dollar value, you see here that what happens when you go through the FCC's E-Rate Funding Mechanism is that they actually bid out the equipment that districts, school districts and libraries, because it services both those types of entities in the United States, the E-Rate Program. You bid out these particular equipment and then you get obviously bids back. We were able to get two bids back. The bid was out for 28 days and obviously this is the lower of the two bids. But what's going to happen is we'll approximately pay 50% of this cost. That's how significant the E-Rate Funding is for our district. So, this is a budgeted line item within the first amended budget. It's, again, it's approximately $342,000 of an expense for this year. And again, technology in the district, it's a great investment. It's going to last at least 10 years in our opinion, and it'll accommodate all of the new devices and all of the, obviously, the new technology that we currently have in the district and that we anticipate having in the district in the next several years.
Thank you, Sam. Clarifying question, with the E-Rate eligible coverage, is the number that we see already subtracted the 50%?
No.
Or is 50% of that number?
It's 50% of that number.
So, we'll pay half of that number we see?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Just want to make, just want to make sure.
It's a reimbursement style funding, so.
Yeah. All right, would someone put this motion on the floor and then we can have further conversation? Mary?
Move to approve the request to purchase a network upgrade with materials from Inacom TSG for the total amount of $684,083 as presented. Please note, I keep going, yes?
Yeah, please.
Please note, this purchase is E-Rate eligible and will cover approximately 50% of the amount.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Oh, who do I, oh, yeah, Chad.
Thank you, Tom. Sam, um, okay, UPS switches, racks, you're talking my language here, but...
Isn't that sad?
I'm sorry.
I'm certainly glad I'm talking... Did I say that out loud with a live mic? I'm sorry.
Certainly glad I'm talking your language because it's not talking my language, unfortunately.
Okay, so you said, I'm sorry, tell me again how old the equipment is that we're replacing?
It's approximately 10 to 12 years old. The majority of the equipment that we're replacing with this proposal.
Okay. So, does this include re-cabling?
It does. There's a portion of this that does include some cabling and, yes, looking a little bit more detail in the quote.
Okay.
Chad wanted to do the cable pulling himself.
Yeah, yeah, that would be fun.
I've seen that before and honestly, that, to me, that's not fun, but to each his own, right? Yeah, installing the drops and everything else, no.
I'm good.
Mary?
Thank you. Regarding the reimbursement, we, I'm, slow down, Mary. There's a number of things that we get reimbursed for, things like this, different programs. Does this, I'm curious how this comes back. Do they, are these programs all different? Is it, does it take a long time to get these rebates back? Does...
It does not. So, it takes a matter of months, literally. The last time that we received this reimbursement funding was several years ago, and I believe it was within a three-month timeframe that we received the reimbursement. So, it's in the form of a check. So, we will receive the reimbursement and we'll deposit it into the general fund, you know, so that's how we'll reimburse ourselves. But as of right now, we would have to, upon approval, you know, purchase this outright for $684,000, so, yeah.
Dan?
Sam, can we depreciate those over the 10 years or is just, it doesn't, it's not reality in our world?
No, no, it actually is reality, but the depreciation for these specific items is less than 10 years because it is technology. And so, this is obviously a large, a lot of these purchases that we're having here do exceed our capitalization threshold, which is currently $5,000. And so, for any individual component that's over $5,000, we do depreciate according to, obviously, our accounting guidelines. But to my recollection, that is less than 10 years for technology-related equipment.
Okay. So, one other follow-up to that, if I might, is that the full value of it or the 50% value of it?
No, it would, it would be the full value.
Okay. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Because, you know, frankly, that's the market rate of what that component is, regardless of what, you know, we're getting as a discount.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Tim?
So, just as a reminder to the board, we've utilized E-Rate going all the way back to 2000. The last couple of times that we've utilized E-Rate, I think a couple of times ago, we replaced all the wireless devices, so that was one purchase. That's what we could afford. Another time that we came through, we replaced all the core equipment, so the main switch, our firewall, those types of devices. And as Sam said, this round is really all of the edge switches, so switches that would be in classrooms, in all your intermediate closets, all that kind of stuff. So, just to have a picture in your mind of what it is you're actually buying this time and compared to the last times. That's all.
Thank you. Mary?
That just had me thinking. Now, is this equipment that is in stock that we are going to be able to get? Is it available?
Did you want to answer that?
I think so, yes, right?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I have Sash come up?
Sash, come on up.
This is our district, obviously, network administrator.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sure many of you know.
If we're going to have you drag your daughter over here, you got to be able to have a conversation.
To answer your question about if the devices are in stock or not, there is four- to five-month lead time on those devices specifically, so.
So, as soon as they get here, we'll get them in? Okay.
Yeah, yep, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Sash, you may not want to leave yet. The guy who loves this stuff wants to say something.
Is there, in terms of our timing, is there a reason why we're going now? Do we have network failures causing us to do this now or do we, can we afford a five month?
We can afford the five months for sure. We can afford the five months for sure. Um, we're, we're very low on port density right now. We just don't have available ports. You know, we're adding cameras, we're adding devices, and we're having to supplement with older switches. Um, and we've, we have mixed match, mismatched stacks right now, which isn't a big deal. It'll work. But to get everything on the same platform that, um, is the exact, oh, you're up here too high. Um, that is the same manufacturers are wireless and have everything on a single pane of glass, um, would just be wonderful.
Okay. So Chad, let me. Where else, I'm just wondering real quick. So we're, we're also adding capacity then?
I'm sorry?
We're also adding capacity?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, we're adding ports in every closet that we need to, um, which will, I mean, we'll, we'll have plenty of ports for future expansion.
Okay.
Yeah. Tim?
Uh, to be exceedingly clear, the E-rate program, which is across the nation, has specific deadlines. You have to put your bid out for whatever you want. Has to be out by a certain time. You have to receive your responses by a certain time. The board has to award and we have to give, um, uh, basically a purchase order by a certain deadline time. So to answer your question, you, you can't just, in the middle of July, say, hey, let's go utilize our E-rate dollars and go buy X, Y, and Z. Cannot do that. You have to go according to their timeline.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and that deadline is next month. So otherwise, we'd have to wait till next year to, to get E-rate funding.
You said the deadline is this next month?
Next month, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then one more thing I want to mention just for the future too. Um, we're going to need to also upgrade our fiber interconnects between MDF to MDF. Um, we currently run OM1 fiber. Um, it's only good for 10 gig. Um, our switches will have the capacity to go to 40 gig. Uh, but we need to upgrade that cable. Just, just want to let you guys know. So, you know, in the future, uh, you get a request for some more money for, for cabling, that's what it's for.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Hold on, she wants to get going.
You can go sit down.
You can take dad home in just a second.
Real quick, is, so as we move forward, since we only have a window every year to do this, it has to be on a certain timeline, do we have an assessment list that we would like to see? Because as we add facilities, you're talking about, you know, we're going to start moving on some of the, uh, drain of road property and all those things. I know we already did a portion of that, but as we move forward, do we have, you know, the, the, like the Christmas catalog to, for Chad of, oh, this, I want that. I would like get all these things. A wishlist.
And like a rotating calendar that tells you that this is?
Right. This is when we're going to need this. This is when we, we possibly could use this or so on and so forth.
So the last thing, um, that, uh, you, you need to know about E-rate is that there are only certain items that are eligible for E-rate purchases. So there are many things that are not. So to answer your question, yes. As these big ticket items come up that are eligible, then we put them out there when we need to replace them and we go through. Um, there's many more things that, uh, are on our list coming down the pike. Like our annual purchases of, uh, you know, laptops, Chromebooks, desktops, those are not eligible, right? And so that's why you don't see us buying those on this timeline, that kind of stuff. So hopefully that answers it.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Alright, you can take daddy home now.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anything else to discuss, board members on this topic? Alright, seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, we're onto item six, update, attorney update. Um, so I'm going to request that, uh, Mr. Tim Mullins comes to the podium. Also, if anyone's here to speak at unscheduled audience participation, again, those cards are on that back table. They would go to Angela. Angela would get them to me. Um, and that's coming up right after this. And, um, so we'll go from there. Um, to the community, uh, and to you board members, one of the things that, that we talked about is that we have been trying to provide answers, uh, to our community about certain things. And there, there hasn't been received the way we would have hoped. And so the, the goal and objective over the next several meetings is to have individuals that are supporting us and serving us, um, helping to answer some of these questions so that maybe it's just heard in a different way. Um, and so we've had questions that are legal questions. We've had questions that are security questions. We've had questions about, you know, uh, listening to our kids. We are going to try to bring experts in that have been involved in this process and help, uh, explain some of the things that, that we've been trying to say. And in particular, um, Mr. Mullins, there was, um, in our last regular meeting, uh, a letter that was given to each one of our board members by a group of our, um, our constituents, uh, parents in our community. And they've been wanting an answer to these questions and I, via email, I told them that we would have you here, that we would look at some of these questions to the best of our ability, and that we would try to answer some of them, um, coming from your mouth instead of mine. And, um, hopefully, uh, provide the community some, some answers. So this letter begins, "We, the parents and community of Oxford Field, Oxford School District, needs to communicate with us and provide answers through sources other than lawsuits, prosecutors. We understand no one wants to affect justice on the ongoing criminal charges, but there are answers we are due, which can be given without hindrance to justice." And below, here are some of those questions. Um, the first one that I would like to bring up and, uh, speak to it to whatever degree you can and, and, um, we may speak to it as well. "We are aware the Board of Education rejected the Michigan Attorney General's offer to start a full investigation immediately, which may have shaped all Michigan school policies to increase the safety of our students. Why was the offer declined? What is the status of the third-party investigation supported by the Board of Education? When will said investigation start and what is the projected completion date? Will full unredacted report be made available to the public?" What say you?
Certainly. Thanks for having me. Uh, nice to see everybody on the board. Uh, as to the question as the Attorney General, uh, when the tragedy occurred, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, our local police responded immediately. In addition to getting assistance to our students in our community as quickly as possible, they immediately began an investigation. And along with them did the Oakland County Prosecutor. Uh, we have had for many years an ongoing relationship with the Sheriff's Department and with the Prosecutor's Office. And I would anticipate that for many years going forward, we'll have a working relationship with local police, local prosecutors. That's an advent, that's an advantage to have a close working relation to any school district, any city, having a close relationship within their community, working relationship, that's important. Uh, they were first on the scene. They were immediately conducting an, an investigation. And I believe that they enjoy, enjoy our confidence that they're capable of conducting a full and complete investigation. Uh, as to the Attorney General, the Attorney General is the chief law enforcement officer of the state of Michigan. If for some reason the Attorney General's Office felt that the Sheriff's Department or the prosecutor weren't capable of conducting a complete investigation and pursuing a competent prosecution, the Attorney General could exercise their authority and step in and supplant that. But they haven't done it. And I would suggest to you, as we watched even today, there were some hearings going on relative to the confinement of Ethan Crumley. The preliminary examination as to Mr. and Mrs. Crumley began is continuing again tomorrow. And now, as the criminal proceedings are going forward, we can see that there has been a very substantial, very thorough prosecution that is being presented by the county. And I think that our confidence in their, uh, maintaining and pursuing these investigations is, uh, is being confirmed.
And Mr. Mullins, what about timing? Why isn't it starting right now? Why aren't, why aren't we getting it going right now and, and getting it done as quickly as possible? And what's, what's the deadline for all of this?
The, and you're talking, of course, about the independent third-party.
Just a third-party review?
Certainly. Well, first of all, uh, as the prosecutor has asked, asked me early on and asked of us not to interfere with the prosecution. So we have information that's gone back and forth. They've obtained information from the school district. We've worked with them and we've indicated, I've made a commitment on behalf of the school district, and I think the school district is in agreement that we not do anything or release any information that would interfere with the prosecution. I can tell you just from the pleadings, we're in the initial stages of the civil, a few civil cases that have been, uh, instituted. But I can tell from some of the initial pleadings that are filed, that the people, the attorneys suing the school district are communicating with the attorneys that are representing the Crumblys, exchanging information that they've, you know, been able to obtain. Well, that's between them. But I certainly don't believe as somebody along with the school board here in our community that wants to see justice done, that we should do anything that would interfere with seeking justice on behalf of the people who have done this injury to our students and to our community. So putting that aside, not wanting to interfere, interfere with the prosecution, as a practical matter, when a law enforcement body is conducting a criminal investigation, that's, that's closed off. That's confidential. The newspapers, ourselves, nobody can get at that information. So for us to, if you will, expend money, employ somebody, form a group or undertake a group to begin an investigation, we would immediately find out, just as the newspapers and a lot of other people will find out, they don't have to and won't reveal that information at that time. So it would be, if you will, inefficient. It would be futile. It, it would be, you'd be incurring cost unnecessarily. Now, when the criminal investigation is concluded and the criminal prosecutions are concluded, all of that, this will, you'll see, this is a vast amount of, of material. Reports, investigations, interviews, exhibits, evidence, downloadings from cell phones, texts, all of that material then will become public. And then, I would suggest, once that material is out there, that we can put together, engage somebody or put together a body that will then review all of that that has been learned, both from outside investigations and whatever further investigation and assessment they feel is necessary to give any assessment or recommendations of how best we should go forward in the future. But it would be, I don't, I don't think it would be smart relative to the criminal prosecutions and, and largely futile and a waste of money to institute it at this point in time.
Okay. So set, timing and access to information are the, to, to, well, the promise to the prosecutor that we would thus not interfere.
Right.
Two, you're not going to have access to any of that information to even use in an investigation. And so three, we're trying to appropriate the right timing for said investigation.
Yeah, to, to give you an example, in one of the civil cases that are filed, they filed a Freedom of Information Act request of the prosecutor. Of course, you know, they, they have a, an investigation of their own. They want to get going, you know, seeking to bring a lawsuit against us. But the prosecutor has cited a very specific exception under the Freedom of Information Act that says, "I'm conducting a criminal investigation. I don't have to give you this material, so I'm not going to." So just as they're not going to be able to go for, you know, you know, there, there are, I can, I can tell the board, as I've told the board before, there are other attorneys who have contacted us and said, you know, "We are representing some people and there may be some other lawsuits that would be coming." But they are, if you will, waiting to let all this material be developed and, and, and be available. And presumably, more, most commonly, as somebody who's done this for over 40 years, the criminal matter goes apace. All of the material is there, be it a trial, all the investigations, all the records, all the interviews are there. Then you come in with the civil process and, and all of that work is there available for both sides to work with. So as, as a practical matter, uh, it really, uh, wouldn't make any sense for us to attempt to do that. I don't think we could do, we certainly couldn't do a thorough review because the most important things, what immediately happened and what was learned immediately afterward, wouldn't be available to us.
Got it. The information that would be most viable is what took place around those two or three days. We wouldn't have access to.
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Um, the third question on this letter to the board, um, "When the jar with a decapitated bird head was located, what was the investigation procedure and findings?" Uh, they mentioned, "Why did parents find out from our children instead of the school? Why did, why didn't the investigation narrow down its list of suspects leading to a watch list for additional concerning behaviors? If cameras were effectively used, um, during the shooting, why wasn't the same methodology used for the bird head incident?"
Well, number one, for privacy concerns, as we know, there aren't cameras in the bathrooms themselves. So that's number one. Number two, when the bird head was found in the bathroom, there was no other evidence with it that would point to any individual. And the matter was investigated. In fact, we investigated along with law enforcement. And it was determined, A, and videotapes from outside of the bathroom were reviewed for a period of time prior to that to see if anybody could be seen bringing it into the bathroom or not. And, uh, the fact of the matter was, no individual could be identified. In fact, there, there was even an email that received that falsely identified somebody as possibly being the person who did it. But law enforcement, A, worked with us in investigating the matter, was unable to determine who had left it there at that time and indicated that they didn't see it as a matter of a security concern or a safety threat at that time.
So from a procedural perspective, we followed our procedures, got law enforcement involved. They investigated. We did pull up video and study video for the days prior and up to that moment. And because of no evidence inside the room, the bathroom, no cameras inside the bathroom, which is different from a hallway where a shooting took place, we can't identify out of the hundreds of kids that went into the bathroom, which one of them could have had it.
That, that's all exactly true.
Okay. Alright. Um, I'm not sure this one's for you. Who are the experts the school keeps referring to in communications? I'm guessed besides you. Um, please list all names, professional certifications, and affiliations. That's something that, I don't know if you want to speak to that or not.
Well, I, I, I mean, I myself, uh, have, have talked to many different people and we can tilt, uh, continue to talk to many different people. We've talked to people who've, you know, from other school districts where these unfortunate things have occurred. I've talked to different experts around the country. You know, again, we're consulting, we're very early on in the process. But exactly, I, I know the school district has made certain resources available, that mental health professionals have been brought in. Uh, one mental, uh, psychiatrist gave a presentation to the community. It was available to the community. So, uh, I, I know we've conducted, uh, had somebody review the security at, at our buildings to, to see if we are comporting with, uh, up-to-date standards, uh, as to security. So, uh, there have been, you know, some consultation, but exactly who all the experts are that will be involved in this matter, I, I, you know, I can't fully answer that at this juncture.
Alright, thank you. And that's something that maybe we as a, as a, I told the individuals who wrote this, that we may not be able to do all of these in, in one moment because the answers could come from different sources. Um, mandatory reporting. The question is, what is the district's position on mandatory reporting? Does the employee handbook have a section regarding reporting? What training does the district require or provide regarding reporting? And were there any verbal or written orders to deviate from the standard reporting policies?
Well, when you talk about mandatory reporting, you know, there is a mandatory reporting statute, which applies to all of us, everybody who's a teacher on the staff of a school district. So our policy as with regard to any federal or statute, or state statute is to follow the law. So the mandatory reporting statute says, "If you have reason to believe or knowledge of a child being subject to abuse, that you have an obligation to report it." So our policy is certainly to follow that law. And everybody who go, who, who becomes a teacher and is satisfied, they learn that in the course of that. And we have in services that, that remind people of that all the time. So our policy and our training is to comply with the mandatory reporting statute as all other laws that apply to education.
And as far as you know, there's no record in any of the investigations that we've deviated from that statute?
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. And I think the last one was, it's more about our resource officers and our security guards. Um, that is something that we're going to have to provide. I'm hoping that security is going to be one of those individuals that's going to come up and talk to us about what they're doing in the schools. Um, up and talk to us about what they're doing in the schools. There is one other thing that I wanted to mention, because it's coming up, it came up in the attachment to this document, a letter that came with this attachment, as well as a couple other emails. The board is being, in a filing that you made some weeks ago, or even maybe a month ago, I'm not sure when you made the filing, but I think the Free Press or something covered something that you put in to the lawsuit, or into your early stages, that is turning back at the board as victim blaming, that we're somehow blaming the kids that they got hurt. And, there's a number of parents that are frustrated and angry that, and I think they call it Item 19, I don't know if it's 19 in your list of things that you did, but could you help us have a better understanding of why, after these kids were a victim of a school shooting, you would put something in a briefing or in a lawsuit that would open a door for their having some kind of responsibility that it took place, or that injury took place? Yes, pre-existing condition.
I got that, and I get that. When lawsuit has started, the first thing is a complaint, and that's where they list all the different things that give rise to the complaint. As a defendant, you only have so many weeks then to answer the complaint. Along with the complaint, you have to set forth your affirmative defenses. Those are things that may diminish or defend the action that's brought against you. So, one of the references is, and the point about affirmative defenses, that as to affirmative defenses, our Michigan court rules say, if you don't raise your affirmative defenses in your first responsive pleading, they may or are waived. So, you can't bring them up in the future. So, again, these cases that are brought against us, these are injury cases. So, it is something of a standard affirmative defense to indicate that the damages that are being complained of in the form of injury may be the result of, or partially be caused by, a pre-existing condition. Now, it's not a matter of victim blaming, it's a matter of raising or maintaining the school's potentiality of bringing it forward to defense. If I were to give you a simple example, you got a school bus, a school bus runs into the back of a car, the person files a lawsuit and says, "My back hurts, it's your fault, because you ran into the back of my car." When you get that lawsuit, I've never met the person, I've never seen their medical records, I don't know what's wrong with them, but if I don't put in there that your condition may be the result of a pre-existing condition, I may have waived that defense. You can always ask a judge to add your affirmative defenses later on, but there's no guarantee there. So, my point being, all of a sudden, a year later, or six months later, you might get medical records, or you might have the person examined by the doctor, and they say, "Well, this person, you know, got hurt in a football injury," or "They've got a lot of arthritis in their low back, and I don't really think this bus accident had anything to do with the problems that they've got," or "The major amount of the problem is the pre-existing condition, the arthritis." If you apply it to this situation here, I don't know the injuries the children have, I don't know what their prior medical history was, and I won't know for a long time, until you get way down the road with discovery. So, all that statement does is preserve the right for the school district to raise that if perchance it turns out that some, you know, some are part of the injuries that they are complaining of might appear to be related to something else. That's all that it is. It isn't directed at any individual, there's no attempt there to victim blame, if you will.
Okay. So we are no way in that affirmative defense stating that any one of these children was hurt because of something they did? In the sense of the wounds, the shots, whatever it is that they experienced? What you're talking about is other things that may be attached to a lawsuit?
Absolutely. For instance, if you look at the complaint, it lists numerous different allegations of injury. And, later on, as you get into the case, you're going to find out what actual injuries they are, and then, as becomes the case, you subpoena whatever medical records that they have, and you might find out perfectly, you know, hopefully, every single one of these kids perfectly healthy, nothing wrong, never saw a doctor ever before, so that affirmative defense would be meaningless. Conversely, somebody might say, "Well, I've got a bad shoulder, or a bad knee," or something like that, because of whatever happened that day running out of the building, and you find out they had a football injury two years before, and they had an operation on their knee for it. So, the only reason that that affirmative defense is set forth is to maintain the ability of the school district to bring forth that defense. And if I didn't maintain those defenses, I wouldn't be a very good attorney.
So even going back to the bus crash incident, no way in the world, let's say you were to find out that the person that got rear-ended had several back injuries prior to getting hit, you're not saying the person caused the accident, you're not saying the person wasn't hit by a bus.
Right.
What you're saying is, there may be attachments to what you're wanting that may be limited by the fact that a pre-existing condition in that one area about your back, you came into this thing already with a boatload of issues with your back.
Right.
But if you didn't put that on the affirmative, in your defense area, you would lose the opportunity to use that once you got x-rays or once you got medical history.
Yeah, it could be considered waived, just like many other defenses, the statute limitations, you only have so much time to file a lawsuit. Or, you slip and fall, and you say, they want to say it's your fault because you have a slippery floor, but then you find out that the person, you know, was wearing unusual shoes, or something like that, you know, that's contributory negligence. There are various different affirmative defenses that if you don't, again, says you have to assert them in your first responsive pleading, or they're deemed waived. So, maybe it would factor into the consideration with the judge or a jury as to what the appropriate compensation would be, or it might be part of the negotiations. But again, it's maintaining the potentiality, no more than the potentiality, of asserting a defense if it proves to be applicable later on as we get into the case.
Got it, got it.
It would be, as an attorney, if there was an applicable affirmative defense, like the expiration of statute limitations, or contributory negligence, or the like, it would be legal malpractice not to maintain the defensive position.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Which I hope not to commit.
Just a sec, I just want the community to know that I knowingly skipped over a few questions, because they're not directly connected to Tim's expertise, things about security, things about why we turn down certain people's offers for help, and that's not things he had to deal with, but I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to, while he was here, and he's committed to be at the meetings that we have here in the near future, that when we have opportunity, we have one of these experts answer some of the questions that we're facing from our community. Eric, I think I saw your hand up.
Yep, just so I'm clear, what I feel like I hear you saying is that this, I don't, would it be called a motion that you put in, that we're just talking about, so this is part of the standard process?
Asserting the affirmative defense is, it'd be a very standard thing that you do. The complaint comes in and says a lot of things, a lot of people, a lot of people say, "There's a lot of things in the complaint that really aren't true." But, so, you respond to the complaint, and then you set, you put forth your affirmative defenses. Very much standard, you know, almost rises to the level of boilerplate, but, to use that term. It's not directed at any, specifically at any individual person or condition, certainly not at this point.
Everybody good right now? Jeff?
I guess, I feel like you stated this, but I guess maybe, let's just reiterate one last time. By you putting that defense into your response, again, you are no way insinuating that any one of these children had any precondition, pre-existing conditions that would have subjected them to this. Neither you nor the school district are taking the stance of any victim blaming.
Yeah, there's no suggestion that a pre-existing condition was in any way the cause of what occurred. It would, there's just the possibility, and like I say, only the possibility-
Say that loudly again in that microphone.
Yes.
Because I think that's what people think we're trying to say.
Yes, there's no suggestion whatsoever that anything that any of these individuals did caused this injury to come upon themselves.
Thank you.
It's just later on, if you're assessing, again, this being a damage or a personal injury case, if there's anything else that needs to be looked at or talked about in assessing what the extent of those damages are.
Good.
Thank you.
May I?
Yeah, please.
We're not just talking about victims in that hallway, there could have been people running, this, that, or, I could have been in the building, and I could have been running, I could have slipped and said, "Ah, this is part of this situation, my knee hurts." You don't put that in there, you discover, "Hey Dan, you've had seven knee surgeries, and now you're complaining that it hurts."
Well, that's, that's the point, that's the point.
That's a great analogy.
So that's, you've got a very difficult job, because I would imagine there's days that you just don't like doing your job because of these types of things.
Oh, I love it every day.
But, in all seriousness, these are things that you just unfortunately have to state in your filings.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And board members, I hope that that helps us have a clearer explanation when we have to face this question. Before we sit down, do you have anything else you want to add that I may have missed?
I guess I would just volunteer something on this, you know, what offers of help that we've had, you know, be it from the Attorney General or anybody. I can tell you that in the months since this occurred, I've had offers from, I've had phone conversations from dozens and dozens and dozens of law firms, experts, vendors, I mean, everybody in the world who would want to get involved, and particularly get hired to work on this matter. So, I mean, so, we can't hire the whole world, I mean, obviously, we have to pick and choose. So, again, a question as to who might have made an offer that we didn't accept, I don't even know who they're referring to, but, like I said, I've been contacted from people from coast to coast, and in medical professions and security professions, and that's part of my job to work through that and see who would be best appropriate for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also, board members, just recently, one of the things stated in two of the emails and in that document, that caught me by surprise, was the insinuation or the statement that they had already had their letter and the request to have these questions answered, they already went to the prosecutor, and had the prosecutor review the document, and that they had the prosecutor's permission, and basically, we should be opening up and answering all these questions. We had some people dig into the prosecutor's office and try to verify. The prosecutor's office did not sanction that paragraph, and they specifically did not approve or disapprove of this letter, and also added that they are not able to give advice on such a letter. Claiming this letter received some kind of seal of approval from this office is false, is false. So, I guess I would say to those who say that that's wrong, please show me the email from the prosecutor's office that told you that we can answer questions about what took place around 11:30, 2021? Because the message we're getting from the prosecutor's office is, no, no, and no. So I just wanted to share that, because I just got that, because I was wondering if they had changed their mind. And Tim, I'm sorry, but would you come up, I want to ask you that question, has, you've been the closest communicator to the prosecutor's office, and they're the ones that told you to respectfully be quiet about this, have they changed their mind? Have you heard anything like this?
No, I mean, I can say that I personally have talked personally to Karen McDonald and to her division heads, and from the get-go, you know, I think we had a personal conversation the day we walked through the high school, and since then have had conversations asking us not to release information relative to the investigation without clearing it with her office first, so as not to prejudice or interfere with the ongoing prosecution. I've never had anything to the contrary, and we're, we've received, I can't remember the number now, any number of Freedom of Information Act requests, and so we're sending out a lot of information to the different people who've sent those. But, we're clearing that with the prosecutor's office, and there have been things that they pointed out to us that they don't want released. So, to the contrary, they continue to monitor and ask that we not release information without clearing it with them, and I, as an attorney and anybody who wanted to see justice done here, I would think, would, even without being told that, would not want to do anything to interfere with the prosecution.
All right, so board members and community, I think that's pretty compelling, because you're regularly getting Freedom of Information Act requests, and for many of them, you're having to say no, the same way we're saying no at this point, because the prosecutors asked us not to do it.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you. Do we have any cards for unscheduled audience participation?
No.
All right. You have scheduled activities, obviously, everyone, we have final interviews in the next week, and we also have site visits in the next week, and we have selection of a new superintendent coming up by March 4th. So, just a lot going on, make sure those things are on your calendar.
Excuse me, Tim?
Yes, please.
Um, Tim, can you give a confirmation, please, of the graduation?
If there's going to be a graduation?
The OHS graduation, do we have a date? Sorry, catching the off-guard. I've heard like two different dates.
Mr. Weaver, do you know if we have a confirmed graduation date for Oxford High School?
May 19th.
Hey, that's what I have in my calendar, May 19th.
May 19th.
At Pine Knob.
The Pine Knob.
The Pine Knob.
They changed the name back?
Yes.
No.
Where have you been?
I'm not going to say it. I'll leave that. All right, any other, any clarifications? All right. Final board comments? Dan?
Mine's going to be real brief. And there isn't anybody here, but somebody may be listening, and earlier this week, I responded to an email, I don't know if you all saw, it was kind of out there, but I responded to an email of a concerned parent, and I have to, you know, if we're going to be leaders, and we're going to have to own responsibility at some things, and I made a mistake. And, I feel terrible about it, when there was, I mentioned the four students who died, and I added one, and by mistake, and I left Madison Baldwin out, and I feel terrible about it. I just want you all to know that I didn't mean any harm by it. I was traveling for work and trying to respond, and it's probably never a good recipe when you're trying to do things quickly. Feel terrible about it, not just for the person that sent the email, but to the students that had to go through that, and to their families. So, I just wanted to say that.
Oh, Dan, thank you, thank you for sharing that. Any other final board comments? All right, I have some things under other that I think need to be addressed, similar to some of what Mr. Mullins did today. Board members, we have gotten a few emails over the last week and a half, that I have worked pretty hard to get some answers to. Trying to subtract the personal attacks and the ugly stuff, that seems to be for no purpose. I just want to touch on some things. I just want to touch on some things. Let me make sure that I know. Corey McCarthy sent a rather lengthy email and said that we, as a board, cherry pick the white cards and decide which ones we'll read and which ones we won't, and I want to make clear that everyone who puts a white card in gets a chance to speak. Hence, one of our one meetings that we had three and a half hours of unscheduled audience participation, because nearly 45 people wanted to talk, the insinuation that we cherry pick in such a way to censor people from talking is just not accurate. When I look like I'm doodling up here and not paying attention, I'm actually feverishly writing notes so that I can echo back to the person accurately what I feel they said, and I usually repeat after that. I'll skip that one. The third-party investigation, several meetings ago, we created a committee. That committee has already met, I think as of yesterday or today, that committee, I'm gonna, they're probably gonna want to talk about this and other, that they've already met with three companies in the process of getting quotes and those kinds of things, getting all that stuff lined up. So I do want you to know that things are happening with the third-party investigation. The framework is beginning to be laid out. The insinuation that we've given many and countless lies and explanations and excuses as to why it can't be done is just a lie. We've said, there's one reason why we can't begin right now, and it's because the events around the 29th and the 30th of November of last year, nobody can have access to that information, and much of it has to go there so it can roll out and do all the other things that need to be done. And so if we can't have access to the core information, then we could maybe do some of the things on the outside, but the point is, that's the one reason we've stated and always stated why we didn't jump right in. We are committed to do a third-party review, independent, which means we're not involved in it, it's being done by others, so that it's accurate and true, unredacted, and it's systemic. It's not just a relooking at what the Sheriff's Department did, and it's not just a relooking of what the prosecution did, it is a looking at every aspect of our society and how we deal with kids and issues, and who, what agencies, if they knew what another agency knew, what kinds of things could we develop that would find answers to some of the dilemmas that we face? And so, I just want to be clear on the intent. We have not bounced around and lied about our reasoning, we have said from the beginning we're committed to it, and we're working on it, and at the appropriate time, we're gonna kick it off, and it will be independent of our fingertips. We will not be involved in the process. You say that you've been in touch with the prosecutor's office, Karen McDonald, and that Karen has assured you that all of this stuff can be talked about. As far as we know, it cannot be talked about. And so if you have an email from Karen McDonald telling us that we can begin to talk about these things, please share it with us. You're not listening to our students. I hope to address this issue in an upcoming meeting as well as security. We've been trying to tell you that we have listened to experts, we've listened to individuals like Dr. Henry, we've listened to individuals from other places where shootings have occurred, we've learned so much, and we're trying to follow some patterns, some things that they've done successfully. And so, and so, you may have thought that we should have a town hall and have 700 teenagers in a room, they're saying, no, don't do it that way. And so, I would hope that at this point, most of our high school students have reflectively been involved in discussions in classrooms or in settings that have been set up over the last several weeks that have given them opportunities to talk about those things. And, and, look, if you're a parent out there, and you feel you or your child's not being heard, get with someone in cabinet. Email Jill Lamond, email someone in cabinet, email Tim or me, and we will work to make sure that that happens. But it is, it's just wrong to say that we're not trying, we are trying to do that, and we're trying to follow the advice of others, and this board is not dancing around those I would want to say also to Corey, the accusation that my ministry is somehow connected to the organization that provided the clear backpacks, that is a lie. I know of the organization, I know of the individuals that bought the bags, but they are not part of my ministry, and I'm not associated with those individuals or the purchasing of those bags or the distribution of those bags, and those who you're telling that that is true is just absolutely false. To imply that we, as a board, already selected who we wanted as our next superintendent, and so wasted other people's times for being there, I will tell you that this board vehemently made sure that we went external, strongly suggested that we go external. We went external, we went both ways, we had, I'm not sure exactly what the first number was, 14, 15, 16 candidates, we got that down to five, we got the five down to two. We went through a process that we pay a lot of money for John Silvery and others from MLI to take us through so that it is a process of integrity. We have not been talking in the background as a board, I don't know where any of these individuals stand, and they don't know where I stand. We have done this to the best degree possible, and to insinuate or taint this process is to taint the next superintendent, and it's just not fair. We have tried to address the deer head issue and the bird head issue. I hope that the answers that we receive from Mr. Mullins today, especially around the bird head, as always, when there's an event, officials are, we get law enforcement involved, we've got videos getting cut, we've got things being viewed, we're going back days to think and to look and to watch and to analyze. When you've got hundreds of kids going into a bathroom, and not one of them has a bird head in their hands going into the bathroom, we don't know which of those hundred kids put it in there. And so a full investigation was done, and I want to make sure you know that. And you mentioned that we removed the memorial, and that there's been no talk of replacing it. I think there has been talk about a proper memorial being worked on from a committee of individuals that would feel, you know, work at what's appropriate and what can be done. So I hope, Corey, that answers some of your questions. February 8th, Board of Ed meeting, we kicked off the unscheduled audience participation, and I was aggressive, dictatorial, unprofessional, confrontational lecturing. What I did and what I've done for the last several meetings is read the bylaws, the rules about unscheduled audience participation. I'm reading them because we have people who are abusing them. I've been on this board for a long time, when Dan was president, never had to read those rules. People participate in open unscheduled audience participation, and they did it well. We've had some people not do it well, and so I'm not being abusive, I'm not, I'm just trying to have order, order in a meeting. Yes, repetitive statements. The first meeting that we had that was directly around the mask mandates, we were there for three and a half hours letting repetitive conversations take place, because I just wanted everyone to be able to get it out. But three months later, we start saying that's repetitive. It's not censorship, it's we've heard that before, if you have something new, tell us something new, because we want to act. So, it's not punitive, and it's not to be mean, again, it's to have order in a meeting and to be able to run a meeting in an orderly way. I hope that Mr. Mullins's statements about the fact that we have bound ourselves to the prosecutor to not talk about things that hover around November 30th until she tells us that we can. This board is not hiding, we're not lying, we're not being deceptive, we're waiting, we're waiting for the opportunity to talk about those things, because we want to not get in the way of the movement of justice. We want justice to be paid, we want it to be complete, and then we can begin to address You mentioned that the original letter that was given to the board, that we had not responded to it, and this email was written eight days after that Board of Education meeting, and that you reminded us that we needed to send that to the right place. I'm telling you that any response that we'll give, we're going to give in public, we serve this community, not one group of people. So, when you've asked questions, there's probably others in our community asking the same questions, and so we've worked to get some of those answers, we'll continue to work to get more of those answers, but the answers are gonna come in an open meeting where we can discuss it and everyone can hear them. I hope that the third-party review and the victim blaming was addressed by Mr. Mullins effectively, and I hope that that works. And I think I'll leave the rest of that to more personal stuff that I'll leave. That's it, that's it, I'll leave the others for another time. If any of you want to have a civil discussion, conversation, my office is a common denominator, I'd be happy to sit down and have a civil conversation with anyone that would like to have a civil conversation. These are tough times. We're going through a lot, and it's not like any of us have done this before. So we may be making some mistakes, but none of them are deliberate, none of them are in an attempt to pull one by ya or somehow deceive you. And so, just know, you know where my office is, you know where I'm at, I'm happy to sit down and talk with one person, talk to two or three people at a time, and share with you what I can and why I can't share certain other things. But I just want you to know that this board wants the same things you do. We have spent time trying to make sure that our teachers are healed and make sure that they're ready, our kids are healed and they're ready, that the healing process is continuing, we're efforts with getting Oakland County mental health help, making sure counselors and grief-sharing people, we are, we are still moving at 100 miles an hour, trying to make sure that we're providing the services that we need to be providing, shifting our security, doing ID checking. Is it everything we should be doing? Maybe not. Have a conversation with us, talk with us, and, but just know, we are working diligently to do what's best for our students and our families, and if you feel otherwise, maybe come talk to me rather than accuse me would be an easier way to do it. Every one of us is willing to have a conversation, a civil conversation, and so I'll leave that at that. Mr. Mullins, I want to thank you for sacrificing some of your time to come and to be with us and to talk with us. Any other final board comments? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Tom. I just wanted to go a little bit deeper into a third-party update.
Oh, please.
So Dan, Eric, and I have, at this point, had three conversations. We've met with Guideposts, Safe Havens, and Jensen Hughes. We've had an opportunity to talk to their leadership, get an idea of the services that they provide, talk a bit about what it is that Oxford is hoping to get out of this review, understanding a bit more about the experiences that they've had, how they go about their process. So, like I said, we've had, we've had three conversations, we're collecting more feedback from them, but that's where we're at. The conversations are not over, and we have more information proposals, we will absolutely bring those to the board. The three of us aren't making any decisions on our own, but we will absolutely bring that to you as soon as, as soon as we have some of that to share.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else closing, Dan?
I think it's important to point out, one of the things that, maybe there's a misconception about what a school board meeting is and what a school board meeting isn't. A school board meeting is a meeting of the board in the public. It is not a meeting of the school board for the public to have a back and forth. It simply has never been and never will be that type of a system. I remember back in my days in that seat over there, that we had some issues that we needed to address, and the time limit was three minutes. Remember those days? It's three minutes. People were frustrated because they didn't have enough time to thoroughly explain what they, what their feelings were. So, we upped it to five minutes. Fast forward to the mask mandate, there was conversation of reducing it back down to three minutes. After that conversation, it was very simply stated, if we do that now, it's gonna look like we don't want to hear what people have to say and we're censoring people. So we kept it at five minutes. That's okay. We're gonna listen to the community. But that's a board meeting, that is a school board meeting. It's not what you see on TV a lot of times when you turn on Channel 7 Action News, and you've got certain school districts and you've got people screaming, yelling back and forth. That's not the process, that's not what this is intended to be. We're talking about the business, the day-to-day business that gets reported back up to us and we make the and we make decisions on those things. Right or wrong, that can be argued, but what can't be argued is the process that needs to happen in the way that it should happen. And we've always stood by those guidelines. One of the other things that I wanted to say is, a lot of people ask why we don't respond to emails. As I stated earlier, I made a mistake. My intention was to give that person who wrote the email to me a heartfelt reason for why we were at the positions that we are at and why we did or did not do things. Never intended it to be out in mom chatter, but that's where it ended up. And as I said, I made a mistake. I sent an email back, I apologized to that person. I've never heard back from them and to my knowledge, it was never, my apology was never put out there. And that's okay. But understand, when you want information and then you use that information to make any one of us look in a way that is not representative of that information that we shared, it's hard for us to have the back and forth dialogue in writing that you so desperately want. I'll continue to do it when I feel as though it's appropriate. But it's, this is not, this is the worst of the worst of the worst. And I think the seven of the folks up here are doing the very best that they can and so is our staff. You all don't know what a great group of people that we have. You can second-guess their decisions, they second-guess mine, sometimes I second-guess theirs, but at the end of it, I know where their hearts are and I'm pretty damn proud of them.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we call this meeting to a German. It's a great day to be a Wildcat.